Hi, welcome back to Hyatt on Utah. I'm Heather Groom and today I've got one of my friends here, Amelia Powers Gardner, who I've known for several years. And if you have the video of this, not just listening on Audible, you gotta see what she looks like because we're filming this right before July 4th and she's got all of her Merka merchandise.
Even my shoes.
Even her shoes and everything. I'm feeling really not patriotic like in my outfit right now. So she's inspiring me to go put on red, white and blue right now. So anyway, um, so happy 4th of July to you, by the way.
Thank you, thank you. Very, very proud. So my lineage goes back to the Mayflower. I'm a member of Daughters in the American Revolution, descendants of the Mayflower. My ancestor was at Fort McHenry. When the Star Spangled Banner was written. So it's like, it's in my DNA. So I have to just like flaunt it this whole month.
I love it. Well, and I just feel like 4th of July is just also just like so celebratory, so summer, so everything, you know? So, well, so thank you and thanks for being here. We've known each other for several years. So Amelia and I'm gonna say Commissioner Powers Gardner, because she was actually the first female elected in Utah County to a county commissioner seat, which I find is crazy because that was in what year?
2021.
2021. So that was the first female county commissioner. She is the first female county commissioner. And we've kind of gone, we go back probably to like 2010.
Probably.
I think when you first moved here. Cause I remember talking to you once, I ran into you and you were like, oh, I'm just moving here. So anyway, it was kind of funny. So we go back quite a ways and yeah, lots changed and things are happening in Utah County. So I'm having her on today to tell us a little bit about her background, also to talk about Utah County because Utah County is exploding. We've got a lot of things happening. And so people always call me and ask and are like, hey, what do you know about, you know, this development or what's happening in the next few years? So we're gonna touch on all those topics. So let's just jump right in. So introduce yourself.
Yeah. So as you said, my name is Amelia Powers Gardner, County Commissioner here in Utah County. I did grow up here, graduate of Timview High School. My 25 year reunion is this year, class of 2000. And then I got a degree in automotive technology from the College of Engineering at Weber State. I worked at Caterpillar, the large tractor and diesel engine company for 12 years, lived in three states and two countries with Caterpillar in those 12 years. And then came back home to raise my family, knowing, having grown up here and lived all over, I knew that this was the best place in the world to raise a family. So I came back when my oldest turned five. That's when you and I met.
Yes.
And I got involved in, in politics and in government. And then left Caterpillar in 2016, ran for office in 2018. And I've been serving the folks of Utah County now for six and a half years. I was clerk auditor for two and a half years and then won a special election to serve as county commissioner in 2021.
That's amazing. Yes, I remember watching a lot of that happen. So, and there's so many things we could talk about actually, because we, we were talking even before a little bit about automotive industry and all sorts of things working for Caterpillar, I'm sure was fascinating. So, okay, so let's talk about some of the things that I'm hearing about. And I want to touch on a little bit even on like, you know, Utah Lake, by the way. So I'm gonna give you a heads up on that. Cause I wanna talk a little bit about that too. But a lot of people ask me about what are kind of the growth plans or what's kind of happening? You know, there's the Utah city or vineyard area that's being developed. What are some of the cool things that you think are like things that my audience would love to hear about?
You know, this is one of the things that I'm excited about. This is actually why I ran for office. Having left a very lucrative corporate career to come back here to Utah to raise my family, I recognized that we were not preparing for growth, right? So last year, Utah County was 43.6% of the entire state's growth.
Wow.
Huge. The entire state's growth, 43.6% was.
Wow, I knew it was, I knew it was up there, but that's.
Yeah, put that into perspective, right? So we're growing faster than Weber Davis, Washington, Wasatch Counties all combined.
Combined.
Salt Lake, combined. And when I got elected, Utah County did not have a growth plan.
I'm not, I kind of remember this actually, because I remember you talking about it.
We literally have the worst traffic in the state. And the reason why is because all of our traffic patterns were based off of current traffic. All of our plans were based off of current traffic.
Current needs.
Future needs, right? And so then by the time you build a road, we've already outgrown it because we're growing at such a rapid rate. So that's actually what I ran on. I, although I do have very strong political opinions, professionally, I'm an engineer. I was a field service engineer at Caterpillar. I was a continuous product improvement engineer. I look at trends. So I could see these growth trends and I look at processes. And so I really, my public service has really been focused on the really nerdy things. I'm actually really grateful for the whole Doge movement because I ran on government efficiency in 2018. And back then, this was like everything about government that was not sexy. And somehow Doge has made government efficiency sexy. So I'm excited because like this is my time to shine, right? But we've been looking at these growth numbers. Right now, we are in the process of updating our general plan. And we've hired a consultant, the kickoff meeting was actually yesterday. So perfect timing.
Okay.
With our new consultant, because we don't want to just update the general plan. It's going to be a growth plan. And we're looking at the KEMC Gardner Institute's projections for one year, three years, five years, 10 years, 20 years. And we're basing our new general plan off of the growth, not the growth that we want, but the actual growth that is happening. This includes.
And they're also doing projections, I would assume. So they're looking at the projections. Cause this has actually been one of my issues as well. I remember when you and I've talked actually about this because, you know, having done so much real estate, you know, and I do a lot in Utah County. And what's crazy is when it's like, you know, you're looking at like the roads out to Saratoga Springs, you know, and it's like, who planned for this? Because this needed to be bigger. Like, we knew the growth was coming, you know?
Well, and we are in 20 years, you've got the Santaquin, Goshen, Genoa, Alberta corridor is going to be just like the Lehigh, Saratoga Springs, Eagle Mountain, all the way out to Cedar Fort. That's like, that is now. So our new plan that will have done hopefully first quarter of next year includes those growth numbers. And it doesn't just include population growth numbers. It's going to include where that growth is going to occur. And at what socioeconomic level? So talking to real estate, we aren't just gonna know how many rooftops we need. We're gonna know how many rooftops we need in which price categories.
Interesting.
Right? So that will help cities then inform their plans. So if we know who's moving here and at, and at what price point they need homes, that helps us tell the cities, the developers, those plans. Right now, none of that work has been done for Utah County, never has. We have, we've had 20, 30 years of commissioners that new growth was coming, but just figured it would take care of itself.
Right.
We're actually gonna do the projections now. We're gonna give those projections to the cities, to the developers, so that we can.
I love that because I get a lot of people lately, even since COVID, I have a lot of people moving here from out of state. And by the way, on a side note, most people always are like, oh, it's gonna change the dynamic. A lot of them are moving here because they're like, I like that we are conservatively run. I, my kids can play outside. Like they're moving here for these different, you know, kind of like they're supportive of everything. But one of the things that I hear a lot of times is, you know, they're just like, okay, well, what's the plan in this area, you know? Or, you know, is there gonna be a good road to it as well, you know? Cause I have a lot of clients that love like Saratoga Springs or kind of the South County, like you're saying. And they're like, okay, well, is, is there gonna be support there? And, and even just like with half acre lots, like for example, there's some people that really want animals. And I think we need to protect that right still. And, and I could go off about this, but people there, I have clients that they want animal rights. They want, you know, and some people are like, hey, we're retiring. We don't want a lot of yard, you know?
And did you know that?
We need all different products.
One of the first things that I did as commissioner was instituted an urban farming act.
Yes, I remember this. Great.
So between one and five acres, typically you have to have five and a quarter acres in order to be deemed a farm to get the tax benefits of being a farm. We can now do it between one and five acres. If you're, if you've got animals on your property, if you're producing food, we can give you the farming. You have to check the boxes and have production, but we can now do that on smaller properties. I think that's a, a lifestyle choice that we need to encourage. But more importantly, I think it's a security issue. If the trucking routes shut down, we need to have the ability to produce our own food. I want people to be able to grow tomatoes in their backyard that they could sell to a restaurant.
Right. I love that. No, I remember when you worked on that. So that is really exciting. So right now you're, you're developing this growth plan. You're doing projections, you're working probably with the cities and municipalities.
And UDOT and UTA and all the players.
I, I love that we're all communicating. It's amazing, you know? So that's so exciting. Well, that sounds fantastic. So what are some of the top things that you're working on right now that you're really excited about?
Transportation's always fun. We actually have a new study that we just received $5 million in appropriation to do a two and a half year study on our east west corridors.
I love that. Yes.
So then we all know it's a problem, but we're gonna have the numbers that show that. So we can get that east west corridor handled. The general plan will have an additional freeway exit heading out to Santaquin so that we can get that built before we end up with the Saratoga Springs scenario. Right? We're trying to get that done. It will be between Payson and Santaquin so that it will give a route to get out to the Goshen, Genoa area that isn't.
Okay. So it's not the main street. Cause that would be just a nightmare.
Exactly. Which is what we have on Lehigh Main Street, which is why we needed Pioneer Crossing. But we're pre, we're proactively doing it, right? Pre-growth, we're gonna do it rather than 10 years after it should have been done. Which is what we learned with.
Yes, lessons learned. Yes.
Right. Corridor preservation on the other side, the Cedar Valley is where most of our growth is gonna come. Our 2050 projections are like one, between 1.2 and 1.6 million for this county. It'll be bigger than Salt Lake County. We've already.
Say that again. So you're saying in how many years?
2050, so about 25 years. We will have between 1.2 and 1.6.
That's what I've heard also. I've heard these projections. So we will be larger than Salt Lake County. That is insane. Okay.
Yeah. So we've even started doing corridor preservation for roads out in the Cedar Valley. We've got 15 miles of.
I'm so glad.
Future freeway, right? That would be on the other side of the lake. So those, those things are happening. Those are in the process. That one's a little bit difficult because it's really hard. For anyone who's read the classic business book, Good to Great, being simultaneously reactive and proactive is nearly impossible. When I came into the county six years ago, and this is something we can talk about, I'm very excited about that. It was a very reactive organization. Nothing was proactive. Everything was reactive. And we have, I've spent six years shifting that to this proactive state, which is why we're now doing the growth plan. Like I said, kickoff was literally yesterday. I think that, that really is gonna be the legacy that I leave is that I turned Utah County from a reactive organization that was always playing catch up to a proactive organization that was proactive planning for the future, which as you know, is significantly cheaper and more efficient.
A hundred percent. Whenever people say, oh, well, that's gonna cost so much money. I'm like, do you understand how much more money? Like I think of like the widening of Eighth North and Orem. I mean, it took how many years?
Taking out homes.
Yeah, you're taking out homes and church buildings, like they had to take out a church building when they did 2100. And that's a, those are significant costs.
Way more money.
And people just don't understand that. It's like, you know what? If we're not focused on the growth or the, you know, doing things ahead of time, like everything that you're doing ahead of time is going to save you, I would even say five to 10 times the price, the cost.
I think the general rule of thumb is like seven to one, like $7 is reactive, $1 is proactive, but you do have to spend that $1 upfront. And then the other aspect that I'm, that I've really been working on is kind of flipping the script on how government serves people. So for an example is the marriage, the marriage licenses that I did. For a thousand years, you wanted to get married. You go to, literally you go to a clergyman or a government official. And the clergy was endorsed by the government. So basically you're going to the government to get a permission slip, a marriage license. And you had to go in person when it was convenient for them. So when we got married, both of, you know, you and your husband and me and my husband, we had to take off a day, I'd take a day off work before the wedding.
Yes.
Not to be spent on the honeymoon.
I did this in California. Yes.
So that you can go down to a government building in person between 8:30 AM and 4:30 PM to fill out a piece of paper to get your permission slip for your clergyman to marry you. Right?
Ridiculous. I remember this.
So I changed that, one of the first things I did my first year in office, and we made that entire system online. You can do it 24 hours a day, seven days a week with an internet signal, a photo ID and a credit card. And today it's the norm in Utah County. You literally just get your, you get it all electronically on your phone. And then when you show up to get married, your officiant scans the QR code on your phone. They can fill it out on their phone. And then we mail you a physical marriage certificate and we email you a certified digital copy.
Are other counties doing that now? I remember when you did that.
It's not as seamless. Not, no one else has it as seamless as us. Ours is the most seamless. Just because we're years ahead in our iterations. I think we're on like V5 or V6 by now. But other counties, some of them still aren't, and we're taking half their work. So we make about two and a half million dollars a year off our marriage licensing in Utah County. When I became the clerk auditor, we subsidized the marriage license program for about, the tune of about a hundred and $50,000 a year from the general fund because the fees weren't quite high enough. We now make about two and a half million dollars a year off that system. Half of all of our marriage licenses that we issue are Utah County residents getting married in Utah County. 25% of them are other counties from Utah that just find it more convenient to get our, they're, they're not Utah County residents and they're not getting married in Utah County, but they are getting married in the state of Utah.
In the state of Utah. So they can do that. So they can actually, oh, that's interesting. I didn't know that.
Yeah. So you know, Salt Lake County, you have to have a, an appointment.
Yeah, I was gonna say you have to have an appointment.
You'd be shocked at how many phone calls we get from someone. It's like, I'm getting married on Saturday. There's no more appointments available. Do you guys have any appointments available? We're like, no, we don't do appointments, but here, I'll text you the link. And they're like, what?
It's like mind blown.
Mind blown. So they just take care of that. 25% of our revenue is other counties. And then 25% is actually Zoom weddings that we do outside the state.
I remember when you were doing Zoom weddings during COVID. I didn't know if you were still doing that.
Oh yeah, we won a Supreme Court case in Israel on that.
Oh, that's right. I did hear that. That's right.
So, so that's about 25% of the revenue that we have there. I want to take that whole script and really that's my focus for 2025 and 2026 is working with the county to make every government service as convenient as possible. I told them anytime somebody doesn't have to legally step foot in our building, I don't want them to have to. I don't want them to have to pick up the phone if they don't want to. I want as much to be done as convenient as possible. Now, there's still the option to call. There's still the option to come down. But if you need to schedule an appointment at the health department, you can do that all online now. I'm getting to the point that I want event permits, building permits. I want all of that to be online.
Beautiful.
So that's really my big push. I've proven the concept with, I took a few key areas. We proved the concept with those. Our, our IT division is really good at that now. So for the next 18 months, I'm really excited to try to just take as many of these processes online as we possibly can.
I love that because I mean, there shouldn't be any reason. It actually saves the county resources also. You know, time, resources, people and buildings, like you're saying. And I remember like when I was a mom and had small kids and trying to like, trying to find a time to go down to the county buildings or do things in person. It was hard, you know?
A mom with small kids.
A working parent.
A working parent, a working professional, an elderly person, somebody with social anxiety.
It was just even with disabilities also.
Absolutely. And then on top of that, we, we literally have the worst traffic corridor in the state. So we're gonna make a mom from Saratoga Springs drive into our health department location in American Fork on the busy roads. And then let's talk about the sustainability and environmental stewardship of that.
Right.
I mean, it's just crazy.
There's no reason.
Really. The only negative is the upfront cost to implement it, but it always pays for itself.
Pays off. That's what people don't realize is it's like, you know what? If you're paying the aftercare almost in any situation. We've even talked about this with like prisons, because there's a lot of signals ahead of time that if somebody has that rehabilitation ahead of time, then it avoids the cost of imprisonment, which if somebody's imprisoned, what people don't realize, they did a study in Utah. This was probably several years ago, so I can only imagine what it costs now. This was back in probably 2010. And it was $1,500 a day per person was basically the cost of incarcerating somebody. And so it's like, if there's things that we can do ahead of time, that took into consideration, like, you know, the admin costs and all of the things that go into it. But when you start looking at it, like when people are like, oh, it costs so much money. The other way, I'm like, no, actually.
Right.
You're saving money. Like sometimes, sometimes you have to put the money in upfront in order to save in the long run.
Yeah. And so that's really what I've been working on. So these remote services, I'm very excited about.
Love that.
The fact that we're actually focusing on and looking at proactive transportation, I'm very excited about. And then the last few months, I've really seen a shift at the county. This is one of the things that I'm very excited about. That's super nerdy and most people will never see, but my first two years in office, when I first arrived, every employee was in stress mode constantly, treading water, couldn't get ahead. I'm sure cortisol levels were flowing through their veins like you could not believe. Our employee engagement scores were very low. We had very high turnover, like almost 20%.
I remember that.
Right? And that just, it's a really inefficient way to run an organization. And it took me two years to get people the resources they needed to even just get caught up. So we took two years to get those resources. The next two years, once they had those resources, folks had the ability to get caught up. So that was my next two years. So then I started asking them to prepare for the future. I said, what resources would you need to be able to be thinking about growth, to be preparing for the future, to be proactive about this? And it took me two years to get them those resources. That was last, that was this last year. And so now we're in the mode where we can start doing strategic plans. We can look at where is our population going to be? And if, how much can we put online? And if we have to build a new building, where is it gonna be? This fall, we will open in Saratoga Springs, the, one of the floors of their new city hall. They built a city hall for 50 years, which is how you should, but they don't need it yet. So we're gonna rent one of those floors and we're gonna put services out in Saratoga Springs so that that population doesn't have to drive.
That's so great. I mean, like you said, even just the environmental impact or all, and, and time and all of the waste that's involved with, with that. So.
Right.
I love that you're getting ahead of that. That's fantastic.
And I'm starting to see that now, right? Like this was all a theory to me when I ran for office and seeing it come to fruition. Hearing stories from like, I, I heard from a foster family the other day, I moved a WIC clinic out to Saratoga Springs. And I talked to a family that's been a foster family for years and they, they were like, you have no idea how life-changing that was for us. Because we used to have to pack up all the kids and go all the way from Saratoga Springs.
To Provo.
To Provo. And now we can do it right there in Saratoga Springs.
That's awesome. That's so great. Well, these are all really exciting. So I want to talk to you about also kind of Utah Lake. I get a lot of questions about that. And I know there've been talks even about having that developer come in and make islands like Dubai. You know, I mean, there's been all sorts of talks, you know? I mean, I don't think we're bringing in whales, just for the record, right? No whaling.
It's not quite deep enough.
Yeah, not, yeah, dolphins. I've heard that one too. I'm like, no, don't, don't think we're doing dolphins or anything. So tell me kind of like, and, and even people, I would say a lot of my kind of clients and friends ask me even just about water. So I'd like, want to talk to you a little bit about like kind of the water planning scarcity thing. And then also plans specifically for Utah Lake.
Yeah, we've had a lot of, a lot of water meetings lately. Water is definitely something we need to pay attention to, but I don't want people losing sleep over this. Like we are on it. We are working on it. Do we have more work to do? Absolutely. Are there improvements that can be done? Yes. But we really are doing, doing a pretty good job. As far as Utah Lake goes, obviously we have more work to do. We get less toxic algal blooms than we've had in the past, but.
Well, and a lot of people don't realize there was dumping, there was, there's a lot of toxic cleanup kind of associated because we had a steel company located right on there.
Yeah, the, the lake is cleaner now than it was 10 years ago.
Agreed.
It was cleaner 10 years ago than it was 20 years ago. It's getting better. But it's a far cry from, you know, the, the pioneer journals that talk about a crystal blue lake.
Yeah, right, right.
We're far cry from that.
We're not there yet. Yes.
But the June suckerfish is coming back. We've got the, the Provo River Delta has been restored, which is the breeding grounds for the, for the suckerfish. And we're, we've got a lot of development coming along the lake area, but there is more to do. One of the things that a lot of people don't realize, I've got a lot of people that don't want anything to happen to the lake. But there's a few things that they need to realize. One, Utah Lake per capita is the most deadly lake in the state. We do a lot of body recovery on Utah Lake, unfortunately. The only lake in the state that has more deaths per year is Lake Powell, but it has 10 times the visitors.
Right.
The reason why is because that lake is so big and so shallow. When the wind picks up, it flips you over.
Yes.
And we get a lot of deaths.
That happened not very long ago. Yeah. And that's when the wind picks up, it's very dangerous.
Yeah. And you don't have enough time to get off. You don't have enough warning and it's huge. And you can put almost three deer creeks in Utah Lake. It's huge. So there's an aspect of Utah Lake, there's that aspect plus the cleanup aspect, combining the two. Whether it's a road, whether it's islands, something to just break up that lake that could break up those, those, that wind and those waves would actually save hundreds of lives. And over the span of many years, it would save thousands of lives. So there is a safety aspect to the, to the lake that doing something like islands or a road, it does not have to be, you know, a, a big thing like Dubai, but doing something would make it a lot safer. On top of that, we can't clean it up. There's gonna be a point where we can't clean it up anymore without dealing with outside factors. The, the number one.
Costly. I would say, yes, the cost.
Oh, billions. We're talking.
People don't understand that.
Billions. We cannot clean it up anymore naturally without doing things like putting sewer systems on all that land south of the lake. There isn't any sewer system west of I-15, south of Utah Lake. It's all septics. And, and then it's all farming and septics and farming have nitrates and nitrates leach into the water table. And that's why we get toxic algal blooms. So we're gonna need, you know, a, a water treatment plant. We're talking hundreds of millions of dollars to put a water treatment plant to get those areas off of septic and onto sewer. But then also dredging it. So it's not, this is billions of dollars. Right now, there isn't a definitive plan, but I think there's a lot of people looking at it, a lot of people thinking about it. We had a water meeting yesterday where we talked about needing a sewer plant. We need a sewer plant for a couple of reasons. One is it will clean up Utah Lake. Two is we have an area within 10 minutes of I-15. You could be at Thanksgiving Point in as much time from West Mountain as you can from Eagle Mountain.
Okay.
It takes just as much time to get from city center in Eagle Mountain to get to Thanksgiving Point as it does to get to West Mountain, the Benjamin Lakeshore area.
Yes.
To Eagle Mountain, I mean, to a Thanksgiving Point. But our minimum lot size out there is five acres because it's all on septics. So if we have a housing problem, we could have a bunch of single, beautiful, half acre, one acre, single family homes in that area. But we can't zone it less than five acres because of the septic.
Because of the septic system.
Cause the septic system.
If you, otherwise we were going to have to have, like you say, kind of water, sewer, all the utilities.
So that's the second issue is it helps with housing. The third issue that it helps with is you want to talk about water conservation. If you have a sewer system, you can use every drop of water twice before it hits the ground or goes into the lake. Because you can use it for, we treat it for culinary. And then if it goes into a sewer system, you can treat it again and use it as secondary water to water your lawns.
Right.
And then if we're using every drop of water twice, we can get twice as many homes, twice as many people in that, using that water.
Wow. Just by being smart about it.
Just by being smart about it.
Oh, that's pretty, that's really interesting.
A lot of places already do that. You know, Orem does that, Santaquin does that, Timpanogus and all the northern cities that are on the Timpanogu Special Service District do that. South of the lake, we've got nothing. Right? So there's.
That's true. Right.
So those are a lot of problems, but those are big infrastructure issues, right? Those are the type of issue where you need leaders that are collaborative, that build coalitions. Cause you need your local entities. You need your county, the state's gonna have to come in and we're gonna have to work with the federal delegation. Cause when you're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars.
It's a thing.
It's a, it's a team effort.
Well, and you're dealing with a lot of government agencies. I mean, there's a lot that goes into these things, you know?
Yeah.
So, and years. So, so is there discussion on that right now? Like as far as?
We're in the very preliminary discussions.
Right.
Right? There's a lot of options right now. In, in a short-term interim, Spanish Fork has a new sewer plant that they recently opened that with some lift stations, they could handle some of that. But this is like a decade-long thing, but we should, we need to start working on it now. Otherwise a decade from now, we're gonna have.
Well, then we're gonna be in a crunch, right?
Yeah, we'll have a, a road across Utah Lake. I know there's a lot of people that just the idea scares them. But if you look at feasibility, it really is the only feasible way to have, to have affordable, single family homes.
Absolutely. I mean, we've got, I mean, we have constraints. You can't really build any further east. You know, because you've got the mountains right there. And so you, we have to build west. You know, because you've got the mountains right there. And so you, uh, we have to build west, we have to. And so I know some people are concerned about the bridge, but I also do wonder if we do have bridge or bridges that go across. Um, even how many more lives that might save, like you're saying.
Absolutely save thousands of lives.
Because that's where, um, you know, I think people don't really realize that, that there are so many deaths on Utah Lake.
More population, more people will recreate there.
Yes.
More deaths. It will really actually, it's a safety issue, saves a ton. Um, it wouldn't really impact recreation because it's so big, you could still.
Oh, absolutely. You can build it higher, they could, yeah.
All sorts of things.
Ways.
It wouldn't affect recreation. And, and then we've got a lot of that cleanup. So there's a lot of things that can be done, but everything I've just talked about is only possible. If you can think proactively. And when your county government is constantly in survival mode.
I call it fight or flight.
Yeah, it absolutely is. They're constantly in fight or flight, in survival mode, you can't think proactively.
Right. You're using the wrong part of your brain on that, right? Thanks for tuning into our podcast today. We are going to have this as a two-part series. Because there's so much great information that Commissioner Amelia Powers Gardner shares with us. Stay tuned and listen to both episodes.